There's nobody here to comment. Do I have to read the rules about commenting? It's like the tree in the woods, nobody's gonna hear it.
Somebody might be listening.
All right, Bob. It's all war, baby.
I wanted to call the meeting of the Riley County Planning Board Board of Zoning Appeals to order. This is the time where we would have open public comments for things not on the agenda. Not here, anybody is here to comment. Next, we have the consent agenda. We can do all three items as one motion, or you can do them individually.
I'll make a motion to approve the second agenda.
Okay, Jack, you approved and.
Much for website profile. So.
Did you want us to discuss item three at all? I know that consent agenda, we don't discuss, but.
Make sure you don't come here next month. Right, got it? I changed it on the calendar. Doesn't mean I'll remember.
So this will be fun for all of us.
Is it gonna be for quite a while that it's gonna be?
Possibly through February.
Okay. We'll remember after the first month, probably. At least a second.
Oh, yeah, we're supposed to be somewhere.
When you show up and you get then the door will be your first loop.
And of course, we will really remind you guys because we don't even know where we're going.
Yeah, there is. There is a set location. We just kind of have to go over and see.
Yeah. Okay. All right, and I guess next would be adjourning the meeting of the Riley County.
On the cassette engine.
Oh, we didn't vote, yeah, sorry.
Hold that thought there.
Old Navy, he wants to. We have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda.
Okay.
So we are ready for voting at this point. All in favor of the consent agenda.
Aye.
All right.
Next.
Excuse me, Eric. You did get noticed that meetings aren't gonna be here next month and all that.
Yep.
Okay.
I saw that.
All right, um, we do not have any agenda items for the Board of zoning appeals. So would need a motion to adjourn the joint meeting and reconvene as the Riley County Planning Board.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on. Next, we have the Riley County Planning Board and Bob will give us a presentation on item one.
Are we getting glare, anything? Can you see the screen okay?
Yeah. So, good evening, folks. Melissa Jarboe has made application with Riley County Planning and Development requesting approval to rezone lots twenty-six and twenty-seven of block ten Western Shore Acres subdivision, SF three single-family residential to SF one single-family residential and replat lots twenty-six and twenty-seven block ten of Western Shore Acres subdivision and lot four Golden Shores together into two lots. The four-acre subject site is generally located approximately eighteen-hundred-and-twenty feet east of Martin Avenue on the north side of Golden Shores Drive, all in Sherman Township. The subject property consists of three lots, lots twenty-six and twenty-seven block ten Western Shore Acres subdivision, platted October of nineteen sixty-two, and lot four Golden Shores addition, platted May of nineteen seventy-six. The applicant wished to combine a portion of the aforementioned lot four Golden Shores addition together with aforementioned lots twenty-six and twenty-seven block ten in Western Shore Acres subdivision to create a single lot and replat the remainder of lot four Golden Shores addition into a single lot. The result will be a two-lot subdivision with each containing two acres. This will allow each lot to be served by well and subject and lateral system and remaining compliance with sanitary code. Lots twenty-six and twenty-seven block ten Western Shore Acres subdivision were zoned A three or single-family residential during the countywide zoning process in nineteen seventy-four. The zoning district was renamed SF three single-family residential during the zoning district conversion on January first, twenty twenty-two. Lot four Golden Shores addition was zoned A four single-family residential in February of nineteen seventy-six and later renamed to SF one single-family residential, January first, twenty twenty-two. Along with the replat, the applicant is, as I mentioned, requesting to rezone lots twenty-six and twenty-seven block ten Western Shore Acres subdivision to match the zoning designation of a existing lot four of Golden Shores addition. There are no variances, conditional uses, or special uses associated with the site. Riley County Fire District number one will continue to serve the site. The nearest county fire station is the University Park Fire Station, currently located at seventy-four twelve Red Bud Drive in University Park. That's getting close to being relocated as well. And so what you see is the outline of the the subject site here, and the part that is being rezoned is outlined in yellow. So let's make that clear. You've seen some maps in there. That's what that's about. The subject site is a mix of hills and steep heavily wooded ravines. Only the far northern portion of existing lot fours within the one percent annual chance floodplain, which lies in conjunction with the eleven forty flowage easement of the Army Corps of Engineers. Now, this is the final plat of the property showing the new boundaries of the lots. As mentioned previously, this request involves lots from two separate subdivisions, lots twenty-six and twenty-seven of Western Shore Acres subdivision and lot four of Golden Shore subdivision. Also, as previously previously mentioned, the request to rezone is limited to existing lots twenty-six and twenty-seven with the intent of matching the SF point single-family residential designation of the existing lot four. There also exist utility easements along the east and south property lines of twenty-six and twenty-seven. The request involves vacating the property line between lot twenty-six and twenty-seven, as well as the lot line between those lots and existing lot four. The utility easement shown here will also be vacated. Twenty-six and lots twenty-six, twenty-seven, and the fourth half of lot four will be combined into one lot. While the remainder. Let me go up one. While the remainder of lot four will become lot two, the request is in full compliance with sanitary code. So a lot, the access currently for lot one in this area here is actually a drive-through of lot four to get to this. And technically, this this cut through should not exist. My understanding through the township, Lady Lane needs to come up a little bit better here to allow access to this area here without the cut through here. So a few pics of the property, I instantly I took these about a month and a half ago. I'm directly east of the existing cul-de-sac there. And this is looking down northeast. You can see Turtle Creek in the distance. It's probably a good thing I took them at that sign because of the tree coverage. You could actually see what's there. At panning to my right or turning clockwise for a shot looking directly east, as you can see, the site already has electricity to it. And the site will also accommodate an onsite alternative wastewater system, mainly due to the proposed smaller size of the cabin. And still panning to my right, and we look toward the southeast again, great views from proposed lot one. There were no pics taken for proposed lot two, as there's considerable tree cover. And as such, I wouldn't be able to convey much visually with that. So essentially replat and a rezone. Staff recommends that the planning board forward a recommendation of approval of the request to rezone the subject property to the Board of County Commissioners as it has been determined to be in general conformity with the comprehensive plan and meets the minimum requirements of the Riley County Land Development Regulations and the Riley County Sanitary Code. That also recommends that the planning board approve the final plat of Western Shore Acres subdivision unit four, as has been determined that it meets the minimum requirements of the Riley County Land Development Regulations and the Riley County Sanitary Code. That's all I have. If you have any questions, I would like to field this one.
I guess we should open the public hearing? With the vote to open the public hearing?
Yes.
It's open? No one present to comment, it appears. Did you get anything in writing? No opponents, proponents, et cetera? Applicants. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any thoughts among the board on the rezoning and replat?
Nope.
Seems to make sense.
Yep.
Yeah.
I guess we entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. Ready? Read the whole thing? Here we go. I make a motion that rezone block lots twenty-six and twenty-seven block ten Western Shores acre subdivisions from SF three single-family residential to SF one single-family residential and replat lots twenty-six and twenty-seven block ten Western Shore subdivision and lot four Golden Shores addition together into two lots located in Sherman Township, section eighteen, township eight south. Branch southern east, Riley County.
Making it clear that the the rezoning is a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners where the plat is approval or denial. Two different things going on there. This is a tricky one, threat, you generally.
Yeah, well, probably could have done.
Yeah, you can.
Okay.
You were going down the road.
Oh, I tried.
All right, so we have a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Motion passed.
Okay, so the Board of County Commissioners will hear this request here in this chambers, June twenty-sixth at nine fifteen AM.
All right. Next on the agenda, looks like we have short-term rental regulation amendments.
Into D I S. And I think. I saw that.
Thank you. All right, let's talk about short-term rentals, because everybody loves that topic, so. So just to give a little bit of background on why we're talking about S T Rs today and and kind of the few items we're looking at amending. Of course, as you all know, we have S T R regulations in our L D R, lots of lots of letters here in planning, so. And of course, those were adopted with the land development regulation update in January one, twenty twenty-two. We had to quickly do an update and amendment to the S T R regulations in May, twenty twenty-two to make sure that they were basically they went back, like all short-term rentals needed to be licensed, not just those moving forward. So that was what the May, twenty twenty-two modification was about, so. And we talked a lot about S T Rs over the last few years. I, you know, I'm I'm sure you folks know it's it's a nation, well, really, it's an international thing. And we're all always kind of learning and kind of figuring out, okay, what's not working, what needs to be changed, you know, reacting to what's going on and whatnot, so. Why we have these before you today is at the Kansas Association of Counties Conference, K A C Conference, in this past December. Our Board of County Commissioners spoke to the commissioners and staff from a variety of other counties in Kansas. And of course, S T Rs was was a topic. So one of the, I believe it was Johnson County, shared with us the City of Independence, Missouri's S T R code, because there was a few things in there that they were talking about, things like setback distances, densities, things like that. So after that conversation with our commissioners and the different counties at K A C, we got ahold of this ordinance from Missouri, from Independence, Missouri, and I had several work sessions with the Board of County Commissioner to see if there was anything they wanted to explore changing in our S T Rs. So I know that's a bit backwards. Usually, of course, it comes to you folks first, but I needed to know from them what they were looking at, so. And and as Bob and I were talking about earlier, if there's other things you folks want to talk about or want to see amended or proposed, of course, we can always do that as well. These are just the three that I worked through with the commissioners earlier this year, so. Just kind of wanted to give you a little bit of background.
All right.
One of the big things, again, I'm sure it's not a secret to anybody, code enforcement of S T Rs and regulations are are difficult. We, of course, have our code that has a little bit of teeth with it, what we what we can and can't do. We have to rely on the court system a lot, so really, it's it's challenging to enforce a lot of pieces of our code. Again, that's, I'm not saying anything secret, but it is an issue, so. Adding more quote-unquote criteria to our S T R regulations, again, is just more stuff that we need to enforce. But that doesn't mean, you know, some of this isn't important to include or at least discuss, so. I do know that the Kansas Legislature has been talking about doing something at the state level to help some of the local jurisdictions, basically with enforcement, with actually, you know, administering these codes. Nothing was done. We had a lot of conversations earlier this year and late last year with the with our state representatives. Nothing was done with this session, but hopefully, something will happen next year. Just wanted to note that, you know, so your folks are aware. Hopefully, we'll get something from the state that can kind of help us with some of this. Because for the most part, really, our hands are a little bit tied. It's basically if people, any regulation we have, if people follow it, perfect, excellent. If they don't, we do have a violation procedure where we, of course, notify. We find that a lot of people, you know, might just not be aware of a lot of different things. Some people just don't know we require S T R licenses. We've tried to spread the word as much as we can, but some people just aren't aware, and that's perfectly fine. We send them a letter letting them know, hey, they saw that you have an S T R, because we do look at the vacation rental sites, of course, word of mouth, different things like that. We'll send them letters, and nine times out of ten, they'll submit their license application, problem solved. Other times, that ten percent of the time, either they don't get licensed, or they don't renew their license, or there's something happening within the unit that is basically not meeting criteria. And that's when we kind of have to go further down the line where we actually do the notice of violation. You know, we give them time to respond to us, come talk to us, come work with us. We really do try to work with people. If they continue to ignore us or not do what they need to do within that timeframe, then it goes to the county councilor's office for prosecution, basically. And what that is, is again, taking it through the court system, getting a judge to say, yep, you're basically violating the code, here's what you need to do. As I'm sure you can imagine, that's not a quick process. And it's it's just not something that happens with speed or ease, so. But that's kind of where we are, again, with with any part of our code. Just kind of wanted to mention a little bit of that, just so you're aware of kind of what that process looks like, because that's a big topic amongst people as well. They just want to understand. If somebody's operating without a license or they don't renew it, what happens, basically? We can't, we we can't just show up at somebody's door, knock on the door, and say, you need to shut down. We we need permission to do that, basically.
You folks need to go home.
You folks need to go home, yeah.
Pack your bags, you're out of here.
Pack your bags, you're you're out, so. Again, just wanted to give a little bit of that background, because that's been a difficulty with a lot of this as well. Just enforcement and being able to, again, administer the criteria and make sure that people are following it. Most people do follow it, which we are grateful for, but unfortunately, there are a handful that can be an issue, and that can be a lot of different things in our code, so. Okay, so that was a far aside there, so. So looking at the few items that we've talked with the Board of County Commissioners about over the last few months about some amendments to our current regulations, that's what's listed in this staff report we have for you. I'm actually gonna go to the last two first, because they're pretty straightforward. And then we can go back to the distance requirement, and we can talk a little bit more in depth about where that came from. And we have some other, you know, information we want to get from you folks to see if that's the best way to do it, so. So if you look at the second page of your staff report, we talk about expanding the responsible agent requirement to include Riley County residency. Again, we do currently have a responsible agent requirement in in our code. That can be the owner, excuse me, or that can be somebody that they designate. We do have at least a couple rental owners or property owners that are out of state. So and we need the responsible agent to be available twenty-four seven and to respond to complaints within an hour of such complaint. Now, right now, in our code, we do not say that response, that our response needs to be, you need to show up at the unit, you need to call, you need to tech. We don't specify what that means, so. This responsible agent could still be somewhere far off, as long as they're picking up the phone and calling. Technically, that meets our code, but that might not be enough, so. Something we talked about is basically requiring the responsible agent to reside and be present in the county when the unit is being rented. So, yeah.
Would that be retroactive for those licenses if they're not residents in Riley County?
That's a good question. I'm glad you brought that up. We will have to specify that with the board. It makes sense to for it to be, you know, retroactive, again, so we're we're catching all of them. But yeah, we'll we'll have to clarify that. And and again, if that's something you folks want to recommend, yeah, I would I would suggest doing that so we can make sure we have that conversation with the commissioners, but that makes.
It's a scenario, though, they have to renew annually.
Yeah.
So even if they're grandfathered in, right, if they only have so much time.
Yeah. Then it starts over.
It's not indifferent, like.
Yeah.
But yeah, and and yeah, that's a good point, but it could but it could also be just making sure they're aware, you know. Because usually, if nothing's really changed, you know, of course, Darren does all the review again, and we have the information. We wouldn't just want them to say, well, I already have an S T R, I've already been licensed before this, so I don't need to meet the new regulation. If we want to do something like that, just, yeah, really being clear about that, you know, it would be either at the immediate time of this adopting, or when you renew, then you have to have that responsible agent be in be in the county. So any thoughts or concerns or any other comments about that piece? Hey, you folks are comfortable with that? You want to just make a note?
Another question, probably irrelevant to the land use issue, but what about the bed tax? Does?
We don't have that in Riley County.
But the city of Manhattan does.
I would assume they do. This, of course, only applies to unincorporated Riley County.
Go on.
So, yeah. Yeah, they they are able to do some taxing that we are not. Yeah.
Well, it's gonna get even more interesting shortly. Geek State Athletics Inc. says they should get all the bed tax. Because that's the reason everybody's getting beds in town. So they should get, they're saying they should get it all.
Clearly, they haven't heard of tech pizza, but.
So maybe we put that on Nick's agenda. But that's interesting, Billy. Yeah, we'll have to see how that turns out. Okay, next one is requiring property owners to be current on all county taxes and fees associated with the S T R property. Now, this came out of when we were having the work sessions with the commissioners. Public Works made the request to have this criteria within the plan. We have or within the regulations. There's at least one S T R out there that apparently is late or can be tardy on their sewer bill. And so they had asked if this could be a way to make sure that, again, all S T R properties are current on property taxes, any county kind of kind of county fees, things like that. When I was doing research, you know, for for these different regulations that are these different criteria, this is pretty common, actually, to have some sort of statement in there about, you know, being current on on your taxes and fees, basically. So that's what this one's about. It it again, came from Public Works. It makes sense. This one's actually really easy for us to verify. So this one doesn't create a whole lot of extra, you know, concern or extra issue with enforcement. It's gonna be a call to Public Works and also just checking that their taxes are paid. So it's actually pretty straightforward. It makes a lot of sense, because it gives us a way to, you know, hold a hold a permit or hold a license to kind of compel you to pay your fees, basically, so.
And afford it to charge more.
Yeah, exactly. So any questions or comments or concerns on that? All right. All righty, so that was the two easy ones. So the next criteria we talked a lot about was distance requirements. And initially, we also talked about density limitations. That's something that's found in the City of Independence, Missouri code. Makes sense for them. They're a city, they're a little bit denser than than Riley County is. And I also looked at several other county codes. There's not a ton of county codes in Kansas. Not a bunch of counties have these regulations yet. They all kind of do it in varying ways. Some just do blanket conditional use, some just treat it like a B and B. Some don't, you know, do anything at all. There there are a few that have them, but we're kind of one of the leaders, if you will, that that have these regulations, so. I'm from Washington State, so I used a lot of their, you know, ordinances and and codes, just because I'm familiar with them. That's that's one of my kind of go-tos if I can't find a whole lot locally. Just to kind of see what what different, you know, entities do. So basically, the requirement for or the interest in having a requirement for distance between S T Rs has to do with traffic and parking. Those are some of our biggest. When we do have complaints about S T Rs, aside from noise, we do get concerns with parking and traffic. Let's see, parking, one one space per onsite, one space per bedroom, and then after that, you can park on the street. If it's a public street, as long as you're showing that you have your onsite parking, you know, we don't, we don't stop you from then parking on the street as long as you're showing that. And again, that's one of the the concerns, one of the complaints that we we do get. You know, that there's cars lining the street, and you know, it's just unsafe for for kids and and the neighborhood and whatnot. And as you can probably imagine, that's a little bit more prevalent in our denser areas, which, I mean, I know Riley County's rural, but we do have pockets of neighborhoods, you know, really, really in in the county. We do have areas a little bit more dense. So after talking about a variety of of distance requirements and maybe density limitations, we did not include density limitations. It just doesn't really make a whole bunch of sense for us. Really, we'll be able to, in theory, handle the problem with a distance requirement, essentially. So they ultimately decided on five hundred feet. And at the time, when I was speaking with them, I had, we we talked about how we would make that measurement between units or between properties. And I had thought at the time, well, it would be easier to look at property line to property line, so that's what we have. Then, or that's what's being proposed, I should say. But then, speaking with Bob and Darren, you know, we we thought about it a little bit more, and it might make better sense, and it's just as easy because we have our our G I S, we have our area. because we have our, our GIS, we have our aerials and all of that, to do it between units rather than um, rather than properties. Because we could inadvertently, I mean, if you have a ten acre piece of property and your house is in the middle of it and you're surrounded by ten acres, the five hundred feet is going to penalize still your neighbors, even though you all have ten acres. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
You know, because we're saying property line to property line. So your immediate neighbors, you can't even see their house, maybe. You know, and you're not gonna have a parking issue. You're not gonna have traffic because you have all this space on your property. Well, now you can't have one because we set property line to property line. So we thought it might make a little bit more sense, you know, thinking about a little bit more to do, again, structure to structure. And we have, was this, you said Golden Shores?
A little bit, I just click and drag upward, go upward.
Okay.
There you go, right there. Your examples. Your examples, those are the larger lots that.
Yeah. Yeah, so again, with the larger lots, that's really not going to be an issue, again, because they have a lot more space onsite. You know, but it's some of these smaller ones in here, and I know these are vacant. I'm just kind of pointing to them so you can see with some of the smaller ones. That's where it kind of starts to be a little bit more impactful. Um, you know, if you have uh SDR properties, you know, up against each other, it might get a little busier in the neighborhood, might get a little bit busier on the street. So again, we talked about five hundred feet from structure to structure, rather than a property line to property line. So that's something we wanted to um, let's go back here. That we wanted to bring up to discuss because what came from the board, and again, nothing was of course approved yet. It has to go through the process for you folks and the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board will take a look as well. And then whatever language y'all come up with, we'll have our public hearing and then we'll go back to the commissioners for their final approval. That's how we do any code amendment. But we wanted to kind of point that out to you folks once we were really talking about it. You know, staffing it after, you know, we had this conversation with the board, we thought this might be the better um, better way to do it that would, in theory, um alleviate some of the concerns, but not penalize people who don't really, it's not gonna be a problem, if that makes sense.
I don't have a problem with that, but let me comment a little bit about your street width and parking on the streets. So some of these developments were a long time ago done. And the street widths aren't wide enough to accommodate parking on the street and fire access with our big fire trucks.
Yeah.
And I think that needs to be looked at. If the, the street is not wide enough and you can, you'd have to, I'd have to look at the regulations. You can't park on it because we can't access it with fire trucks if there's a fire, which is very important if you're renting.
Yeah, very important either way, yeah.
Are you suggesting a smaller fire truck?
No, no.
Oh, no.
Either wider roads or you can't park on the street.
Only parking on the street if, if the street is over a certain width that would be determined.
Right.
By the biggest fire truck with that.
And, and I mean, that obviously makes, makes sense. That's probably a conversation we'd have to bring in, like Public Works Board to see, can we sign the streets to say no parking?
Right.
You know, and then, yeah, then that would take care of the problem in theory.
I mean, they can, they can give up property to expand the street.
Yeah, yeah.
Based on the plot that they've done. Depending on how big the lots are and all that stuff.
The right of way is already there, but the roadbed is not the standard.
Right.
And so that, that comes. Yeah, that's really, becomes the issue. That's really a township issue. The other thing you have to consider when you're, you're thinking of this, as far as parking, putting no parking signs up, then remember, this isn't just a residential neighborhood. That, the, the neighbors who live there get to park on the street. Suddenly, there's something that says, no parking. That means for everyone that.
Right.
When they see where they can overlap and.
I understand that, but you still have to have access for fire trucks.
You still have to have.
Whether it's an SDR or private residence. And the, the width of the roads, when they plotted these, again, in the nineteen sixties or whatever, might not have been wide enough for now. So I'm just bringing it up as that's just another issue that probably needs to be looked at when you look at these regulations and you're saying one, one space per bedroom. You may have to say, no, we need one and a half spaces per bedroom. Or something, something similar to that.
Off-street parking.
Correct.
Could that be part of it, put into it, that if you do have a SDR, that you need to have? I mean, adequate off-street parking or?
So we can, I mean, yeah, if you folks want to recommend an increase in the off-street parking requirements, that's definitely something we could.
I think it would be based on the right of way or the plotting on the roads for, for width.
Or you could just say it all has to be off-street.
You can, you can, but again, uh, uh, it's just like he said, not trying to penalize them and say, you can't do this. You're trying to say, if you do it, you have these restrictions.
Fair.
Yeah, and it's gonna be easier for us to say, okay, let's bump up the parking requirement.
Right.
On, onsite parking requirement, rather than say, well, if you have an SDR, you can't park on the street.
Right, or we have to expand the road and maintain the expanded road.
Yeah.
Because that, again, that's tax base and how you maintain roads. Townships don't have enough money to maintain roads as it is.
That's Sherman Township. We're dealing with that now, trying to get the roads widened back out just so we.
Not, it's not, not just Sherman Township, it's every township. Gravel's expensive and when you widen it out, it takes more gravel and more maintenance. Which means more tax dollars.
Yeah. Yeah, so again, we can definitely talk about um increasing our, our parking requirement, or if you folks would like to recommend something like that.
Yep.
So just so we can keep this going, that would probably be, and we have a long list of um other LDR amendments that we're, we're working on.
I'm not trying to throw a wrench in, I'm just saying, these, these things are all related.
Yeah.
And because they're interrelated, you have to consider them. As you say, oh, well, one per, per lot, and then they can park on the street. Well, can they?
Yeah, no, that's, it's a valid concern, absolutely.
And considering that's a valid concern.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, that we don't account for, so.
Maybe that's.
Yeah.
That's, that's.
Um, I have a question on the, you know, it says no new, like, SDRs within like five hundred feet. But if you've already got them within five hundred feet.
Yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't take it away. Yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't.
Even if they forget to renew their license for six months or something, I'm just wondering how you handle that, like, if, if they gotta keep their license current or else it's gonna go away.
Yeah, I would say so. I mean, we would need to kind of.
If you let it lapse, then it, then it goes away. That's the incentive for them not.
That's why I don't let it out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you want to keep it as an SDR, yeah.
We could define, you know, what that timeframe is, you know, do you want to say, you know, fourteen days, you know, I'm.
I don't know if there's anything within five hundred feet now anyways, is, is this needing?
I, there might be one, I think there's one like across the street. So it's not really something we're experiencing. We're just kind of trying to prevent potential issues. Um, but yeah, we could definitely, you know, build something in, you know, to make sure, again, and, you know, if because what it would become is basically a non-conformity. But as long as it was existing before the code changed, it would be allowed to stay as long as it's continued. And usually non-conformities are a twelve month um, twelve month thing. After twelve months, if you don't continue the use or whatnot, you lose it, basically.
It's already built in.
Um, yeah, we already have a non-conforming section built into our code. If you folks wanted to do something different in terms.
I think, I think if it's built in, you just leave it where it's at. Hmm, that, it's already written, so they know if they but, but this new code would hammer them if they, if they had one close.
Yeah.
It could be more specific.
If you, yeah, we could, if you'd like to be.
You'd like that, right?
We could be more restrictive if you want to. If you don't want to give it a twelve month, we could do six months. We could do, you know, I'm just throwing numbers out there. Just so you're aware, like Bob was saying, we can do that if you want to, but.
But why would you change it now? I mean, if, it, it in general, if they're not gonna renew it within twelve months, it's probably, they're probably not gonna renew it.
Yeah, they're probably not gonna do it anyway.
Yeah. And even if you were to call it a six, same.
Yeah.
Same.
Yeah.
Um, it just, it, it forces them not to dilly-dove.
Right.
Which some of them kind of do, so.
But, but you also have to look at, you're, you're looking at it from a perspective of you have to enforce it. You have to look at all these things. Any new stuff you have to look at, again, which takes more time or more staff to do that.
Yeah.
Four hours in a day.
Correct.
Yeah, if this, well, with any of this, but if this one went into effect, yeah, it would just be when we get a new, a new license, um, just checking around and making sure there's not one within five hundred feet, basically. Within structure, if that's the way we want to go.
We already have a couple of those.
So I work closely with Darren on the short-term rental renewals and so we've only been doing them, what, three years?
Three years, yeah.
Um, and so it, it's a learning lesson for us as well. Well, as what, we had no clue we were gonna, most of them are fairly good at renewing on time. But they also have to have an inspection and that is one of the things that we have ran into is getting them to do the inspection in a timely manner. So now we um have sent out, now our emails go out explaining to them. Um, you need to get your inspection scheduled also because if your license expires, now you're in violation of the regulations and trying to put some teeth in it that, okay, we understand these are rentals and it's occupied, but you also need to get a, let us in there and do what we need to do.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. It's a challenge. So. Um, okay, so what are you folks thinking about the proposed distance requirement?
I like the unit, yeah, it sounds.
I, I, I like the unit too.
Okay.
Makes more sense to me.
Yeah. We can make that. Okay. Um, and then I want to go back for a second because again, you folks were talking about the parking. Um, so at a future meeting, we can bring back discussion specific to um parking. I feel like there is something else with SDRs we wanted to bring up. I gotta ask Darren. Um, so we'll, we'll bring that in, in a future meeting so we can talk specifically about some of that. Um, if, if that, if that's okay with you folks, if you're comfortable with that. So just want to make sure I addressed that. We got that. We'll, we'll bring that back, so.
More pressing issues.
Yeah, so. Okay. So any other comments or questions, concerns, anything with what's being proposed here?
For the most part, it makes sense.
Okay. So on Thursday evening this week, we're gonna bring it to the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board and get their input. And then um assuming all goes okay there, we'll have our public hearings with both you folks and their board next month. Get through that and then it'll go back to the um commissioners to make their final determination either later July or early August, so. All right, more of SDRs.
Not to be accused of section township and range. Okay, anyone else caught that? So I'll have that too.
Will I say that again?
SDRs, the section township and range, so yeah.
All right, from one fun subject, the next comprehensive plan update report. Um, so we have been um busy working on the comp plan with our consultant and whatnot, doing a lot of um, again, still public outreach, um, community involvement, all of that. Um, we had, they did prepare an existing condition study. It is on our website. Um, you folks can take a look at. And then we had a community workshop last month at Potter Hall um with the subject of the existing condition study. Um, Stan Tech, our consultant, gave a PowerPoint presentation. You can find that presentation on our website. Um, and then we also had several activities that they did, several interactive activities um that people were able to participate in. We had about twenty-eight people there, um, which I know sounds like a low number, but um, six o'clock PM on a Wednesday in the middle of the week, that's pretty good.
Construction, I have that one in there.
What's that?
Road construction.
Road construction, you know, all that stuff. Um, you know, obviously, we always want as many people as possible, but that we got almost thirty people um is, is pretty good. Um, and you can see on, yeah, actually, okay, so Stan Tech prepared um kind of a summary of the meeting. Um, and you can see on the first page of their summary, what they had was a large um aerial map of Riley County. And all attendees, I don't think every single person did it. We didn't force people to do the activities, but we encouraged them. Um, but you can see stickers there. Now, the colors don't mean anything. That's just the color somebody was given. It's, it's not, you know, there's, there's no difference between um, you know, what colors doesn't represent anything different. What we asked was for people to place a sticker where they live or work in Riley County. I believe it was, everybody was where they live. And even though there was quote unquote, only twenty-eight people there, you can see we actually had a pretty darn good spread across the county.
Yeah.
So we had people from just about all areas, which we were really glad for. We were really pleased to see such a good ge- geographic representation of the county there. Again, this was at Potter Hall, so people had to, had, had to come on down. You know, they had to make an effort to get there and we really appreciate them doing that, so. I do want to point out that we, that we had people from a lot of different areas, which was really good, really important. Um, excuse me. We also did um a couple of other activities that Stan Tech put together. Um, they did a six-word story. Um, basically, they gave them just a simple little um half sheet of paper and, and on the picture and the the memo I did, you can see a picture of um of the little card that they were given and then they kind of hung them up so people could take a look. Not everybody did one, of course, only about ten people did. Um, and you can see what the results of those six-word stories were. Basically, by limiting it to six words, it's what's your priority, what, what's really on your mind for Riley County when we're narrowing it down to, to six word, six words. Um, and the other activity we did that people really enjoyed and are still talking about is the bucket activity. And you can see what that looked like on the memo that I prepared to you on the, the picture in the front there. You can see what that was. It was literally a bucket activity. Um, we gave everybody three, it was, they were fake, but we gave everybody three dollars, you know, three million or three hundred, you know, however you wanted to do the denomination. We gave everybody that, that amount of money. And basically said, okay, what's your priorities? Put your money in the buckets of your priorities. We all know we have limited resources and we can't do everything, even though we would love to. So really, it's the public telling us, what do you want to put your taxpayer dollars towards? What are your priorities? What's important to you? So we know what you're looking at when we're determining what to spend taxpayer dollars on. So you can see um you know, what the different um categories were and you can see kind of um the count for each of those. Updated and expanding infrastructure took the top spot, um followed very closely by preservative character and agricultural land. Um, that completely tracks with everything we've been hearing through um the surveys we've done and through the different community meetings and the community input we've been, we've been working to get over these last couple of years. That's all, you know, a lot of the same kind of sentiments we've been hearing from people, but again, it's interesting when you give people a set of categories and you can see at the end um, at, at the bottom, I should say, somebody did a write-in. Um, you know, got, gotta get that one in there, so. Um, you know, but it's interesting when you give kind of a set of, well, here's our, here's our wants and.
That, that was the guy who won the most something that's gonna cost tax dollars.
Yeah. So. Um, yeah. So again, not everybody um participated, but a lot of people did and it was just um a really, uh, you know, useful interactive activity for people to see, okay, we have limited funds. We gotta prioritize because unfortunately, we can't, we can't do it all. So we will be having more um community workshops over the next several months. Um, tentatively next month and tentatively October. Um, more information to come on that. We're looking at probably having our next one up in the North County area. Um, just to, you know, try to get more people up there as well. Um, the subcommittees, those six groups have been working on their um to finalize, it's weird to say finalize draft goals, they're still draft until every, everything is done and, and the plan is, is adopted, they're still draft. Um, but I'm trying to get them to finalize their draft goal so they can be released to the public. Um, the public will have a chance to review and make comment on the draft goals for each of the categories. And then, of course, we got, we'll bring it to the Board of County Commissioners to get their input and any directions that they want to see on there. So most of the um subcommittees have made some good progress towards draft goal language. Um, Stan Tech, our consultant, has provided some to them that they can kind of work with, word from, and make sure it's tailored to Riley County. So that's a lot of what we're working on right now. Um, so hopefully, what is it, already almost mid-June? Um, hopefully within the next month or so, we'll have, we'll be able to have that language out for um public review. So, and we'll keep you, we'll keep you folks. So, and we'll keep you, we'll keep you folks updated on that. Um, we've also talked a lot to a variety of stakeholders. You can see the list there of the different folks we've talked to or sure um have made the attempt to talk to. Um, as with all of this, we want as much input as we possibly can get, but we can't force people. Um, you know, so we've had conversations with all the school districts, um, almost all the small cities this, this week. Um, Randolph City Council, we're going to go up and talk to them um about what's going on and get their input. As you can imagine, um, the small cities are a really important part. I mean, there's a lot of folks that are an important part, but the small cities, that they're designated growth areas and with the impacts that our plan has on them and vice versa. We really want to make sure they have a seat at the table and we can hear what they have to say and what their needs are, and that we're meeting those. Um, so we'll have those conversations. And again, you can see some of the different folks we have had the chance to talk to, um, or at least have been able to send out questions to. Um, we've messaged everybody on this list. If they haven't responded or said no, I don't want to help, which I don't think anybody said no, but I don't think everybody's responded. We're not just going to hold, send you questions. We want to make sure they're comfortable and willing to participate before we, you know, kind of, kind of go too heavy on them. So we're still working on several. But we've been fortunate enough to talk to a variety of people and get a lot of different um good inputs, so. And all of that um will be put on our website, and we'll have future conversations with um, with our Board of County Commissioners to discuss stakeholder input once it's all compiled. And you can see there, I did um include a little bit of information, some of what we're hearing from the small cities. It's all kind of fairly consistent. Um, you know, some of their different needs and, and wants and whatnot. Um, you know, they all vary, which is to be expected. Um, you know, with, with what they're up to and what, what kind of assistance they might want or need from us. Um, one of the consistent things I've been hearing from all of them is they would like some assistance if we can, you know, sharing of resources, you know, sharing of information. Most of them do not um have dedicated planning staff. It's either some other uh, staff members wearing a hat or there's none at all. Um, so definitely helping them with, um, you know, all of them ask, you know, hey, if you know about grant opportunities, can you funnel them our way? There's a lot of things we'll hear about that we're not um eligible for, maybe due to population or things like that, but the small cities might be. So we like to try to funnel that information to them so they're aware of these opportunities, so. So that's one of the big things they've, they've asked, um, you know, through this, through the conversations we've had with them, so. And that's definitely something we can, we can work on and help with, so. Um, we also, again, as I mentioned, want to talk to all the small cities about their designated growth areas. We talked to Riley and Leonardville, um, and they're kind of, you know, tossing it around how they'd want to, um, you know, expand or change or leave as is. You know, we want to hear from the small cities what they're comfortable with, with their respective um, designated growth areas. So waiting to hear from Ogden, and again, as I mentioned, we'll talk to Randolph this week, so hopefully get some good, good input from them, so. And as I broken record say all the time, this is all about public engagement. This is the community's plan. It's not the county sitting up here telling, telling people what to do. I want you all to tell us what to do, and we'll formulate our plan based on that. So, um, again, I just like to talk all the time about that I want input from folks. I want engagement. I want to hear what people have to say, good or bad. I, I would like something, something uh constructed that I can work with, but if you want to tell me something, you know, negative, that's fine. You know, we, the important thing is I want to hear it, basically. Um, and we also have to rely a lot on word of mouth. Um, you know, telling your neighbors, telling your friends what's going on. Um, we unfortunately can't, you know, get, get a notice in everybody's mailbox. I can't call everybody. I would love to, but I don't have enough time in the day, and I don't have enough funds for that, so. The really, we just need to, you know, I, we talk about it all the time, you know, in, in all chances we get. And, you know, if I can just, the people I talk to, if they can tell one person, tell, you know, you know how that goes, um, and just get the word out that way, so. I've been blathering on for a long time. Do you folks have any questions or comments? Bob, do you want to add anything? So we're getting it done. I'll keep you all posted as I hopefully have been doing okay with. Um, and if you have anything at any point, you know, let me know. Call me, come visit, send me an email. There is lots of information on our website, um, all of that. Again, the existing condition study and the PowerPoint presentation and whatnot is all there. Um, so is all of the info, input that we've gotten so far, even, you know, when we first started this process in twenty twenty-three, we did our public survey. We did our uh, community meetings. All of that input and all of that information is still on the website. It'll still be used. It's still there for folks to take a look at. And then again, we're updating it all the time with more. Bless you, so just keep an eye on that. And again, if you have any questions, let either of us know. Thank you.
Um, thanks, Amanda.
Yeah.
I would, and give a motion for.
So moved.
Sorry, wait, like I said, at a, in the.